All right. This is Ashley Smith, the Canyon City Mayor, and I'm going to be opening up our city council meeting for April 20th. I'd go ahead, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a roll call, Cindy.
Councilmember Dennehy, absent, councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hocken. Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
We have her.
Councilmember Reed.
So I see her name is on here, but we're just somehow not hearing her.
Okay, councilmember B Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. And it's really awesome to be able to see and hear from everybody. I mean, we're a great team and it's hard when we can't really connect. And today's a really exciting day because Governor Polis made an announcement that things are going to be able to change, shift from a stay at home, stay at home order to a safer at home order. And our businesses in some form or fashions are going to be able to start opening up, obviously, with more guidelines. Do you want to expand on that a little bit, Administrator Stevens?
Yeah, the governor had a press conference today stating that the stay at home order will expire at the end of the 26th, so on the, on 27th. You know, those, those mandates will start to roll back. We are expecting a lot more guidance coming out the rest of this week on how some of those businesses are going to be able to reopen and some of the precautions that they're going to have to take. But we'll, we'll continue to monitor that situation and get information out as soon as we can.
And I think we need to reiterate that the safer at home orders that are going to open up for businesses, it still means we have to wear our face masks, we still have to do social distancing, we still need to encourage our older population and at-risk population to stay at home. And so all of those things together is what's going to help us open up a little bit more. Are there any questions from council about that? All right. I think more information will be coming, but Dolly, go ahead.
I just, I wondered, I know there's a lot more information to be coming forward. I wasn't able to watch because I was at work, but I did get kind of a rundown on it. There are specific businesses that will not be allowed to open at this time? Or has that been determined yet?
There, yeah, I think it's still going to be a phased reopening and I think, you know, they still have different opening dates for different businesses. You know, the, the press conference, you know, they had a slide deck running in the background, trying to get my hands on that slide deck so we can share, share it out to everybody.
Great. Thank you.
And there.
Let's just recall as time goes.
Yeah, everything always changes so quickly, but it looks like there's opportunities for counties to decide for themselves, you know, a little bit about how much can be opened or closed depending on what the situation is in their community. And so it's nice that Governor Polis recognized that it's not a one size fits all across Colorado State that we can have some say in that for Fremont County. I've already emailed FCD-PHE and the county commissioners and asked, can we get together and meet and talk about, you know, what this is going to look like for Fremont County and what we can do to move forward? So that is totally awesome. All right, so Mandy's still trying to get on, hopefully she'll be able to get on soon. We don't have an invocation today, but we do have the pledge allegiance. So go ahead and I'm really glad you had the flag up, Jim, that was a really good choice. We need that. So I'll go ahead and start the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
States of America.
And to the.
Republic.
Nation.
Liberty and justice for all.
Holy cow, that was a challenge.
But we did it.
We did it.
Um, we have citizens request to speak to council. Oh, Mandy made it with a cool background, too. We still can't hear you, though.
I don't show that she's muted.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you could call in as well so that we could hear you through the call in. Oh, wait. A magic.
Hi, okay.
We want to see those clouds moving in the background, too.
So just thing that we don't have a citizens, we speak, speak to council that I know of, but it looks like Christie Gotham or PIO is on today and she's probably looking at the Facebook feed. And if something comes up, I'm sure she, she will let us know so that we can address those comments from the community. We do have a proclamation, Rex Brady is always so proud to be able to receive the honor on National Arbor Day and have the Tree City designation. And so there's a proclamation for that. And I'll read that right now. Says, whereas in 1872, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas these increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the tree of Canyon City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Ashley Smith, Mayor of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020 as National Arbor Day in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. And further urge all citizens to plant trees to grow out in the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this 20th day of April 2020. So congratulations to Rex. And yes, Councilman Meisner.
Maybe Ryan knows, but how many years now consecutively have we been a tree city?
I don't have that in front of me, but I know it's been multiple decades.
It's a long time, yeah.
Way back when I was on city council, we, we had it by way back then. And that's been a long time.
That's a long time, Frank.
Yes, it is.
That's wonderful. We have another proclamation and that is for the Colorado Public Safety Telecommunications Week for the April 12th through 18th, 2020. I will not read the whole thing, but I'll read a part of it. Whereas dedicated public safety communication officers serve the citizens of Colorado by answering the requests for law enforcement, fire or emergency medical services. And whereas the public safety communication officer is the first link between the citizen and the emergency responder. And whereas the safety of both citizens and emergency responders is dependent upon the highly trained and skilled public safety communication officer. And then we'll go on to the, whereas the Association of Public Communication Officials has designated the second week enable to recognize the public safety telecommunications. We do hereby proclaim that April 12th through 18th, 2020 is the Colorado Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And urge all citizens in honoring the men and women of Colorado who play a critical role in the protection and preservation of life and property. We do appreciate all that they do. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, would you like to say, because you serve on that board?
I, I do, and I serve on both the Combined Regional Communications Authority Board and the E-911 Board for the county. And, and I just wanted to say that, you know, those people are, are actually very key to our safety. They're very dedicated. It's a, it's a job not without consequences. I mean, when you're dealing with life and death, you know, situations over a telephone, it is, it is extremely difficult not to take that home with you. There's a personal cost these people pay to, to help keep us safe. And I just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you for that recognition, absolutely. We're going to move on to council member announcements. Are there any announcements from our council members today? Councilmember Gonzalez.
John was first, he had his hand up first.
We're doing the whack-a-mole thing here.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that one of the things that we've got coming up here in the next year, a year and a little bit more, is the rewrite of our master plan and the rewrite of our, our zoning and code regulations. We're going to be doing some fine tuning on some of the, on some of the zones. We're not going to just throw all that out and start over because that's an impossibility, really, when you, when you already have a well-developed city. But we're, we're going to be working on both of those endeavors. Today, we interviewed two of the four finalists and we have some really good firms out there, it looks like, that are going to help us in this effort. And it looks like the things are aligning there, I would say, for us to have a crackerjack master plan coupled with a new development, development code that will, that will help do the things that we've, you know, as city council members, we've seen various things that have, that have, you know, come before us that, that, that needed to be fixed and we're going to have a really good chance and a really good probability of fixing some of that stuff. Thank you.
And that's fantastic. Any other, okay, Dolly, we'll go to you now, Councilmember Gonzalez.
So I, I just wanted to take a moment and commend our staff and city council and mayor for everything that, there, there's been so much that has transpired over the last month. Rules were changing hour by hour, minute by minute sometimes. And as soon as something would be put into writing, it would change again. And I know that a lot of people in our community have been frustrated and they've been questioning a lot. And I just want to commend everyone for staying on top of it as, as much as you can and answering back and just, just being there even on a Sunday afternoon when a question comes up. I feel like these are times that none of us know how to handle and, and we're just trying to take them as they come. And the, the morale and positive words and, you know, positive spirits that are being displayed, I just have to commend all of you guys for, for everything that you've put forward. And then I also just wanted to make an announcement. This weekend, I had a conversation with a couple of friends of mine and we were throwing out ideas. And so today we decided to put up a page on Facebook to adopt a teacher. Because I feel like so many, I mean, I, we're, we're at home, those of us with kids, we're at home, we're homeschooling our kids. But teachers have had to really learn how to change their, their teaching skillset and then still expect results back from these kiddos. So it's, it's really taken a toll on their teaching styles and their classrooms. And then also you have to think about those teachers. My daughter goes to Washington, she won't be able to step back into that building again before it's demolished. And so, because she's moving on to middle school, but think of some of those teachers that have taught there for years. You know what, I'm not just talking teachers, I need to say more than just teachers, it's all staff. It's the lunch ladies, it's the custodians, it's the school tech, the school nurse techs. And so I really felt it, we really felt it was important to support them through the end of the year. They're not going to be able to do what they typically do on a day-to-day basis. They've had to cancel their events, their concerts, their games, their coaching sessions, all of those things that, that make them who they are. And so in, in kind of the spirit of uplifting our school staff, that's been arranged. So if anybody is on Facebook and you'd like to share it, that'd be great because it'd be awesome to see a lot of these people supported through the end of the year.
That's awesome, Dolly, I totally love that.
It was, it was not my idea, everybody, it was a collect collaborative effort.
That's what I love about our community, we can get together, Dolly. Any other announcements from city council members? I would like to make an announcement for supporting our local businesses during this time. We did, you know, we are really excited that a lot of them will be able to open up in some form or fashion, probably around April 27th or May 4th. It won't be full-blown, it will be smaller and it's going to be a long haul. Until that time, their, their doors are still closed. And it's been a really rough month and some of that funding that was supposed to come in from the federal government, it ran out really fast. And a lot of us did not get that funding to help pay our bills or to pay our employees or to see us through those tough times. My husband's businesses included in that, we didn't make the cut. But what we have done is created a virtual store where businesses have put their products and services and e-cards on this virtual store, it's called Royal Gorgeous Deals. And you've probably seen some digital advertising for that and it went live today. And the report I got was this morning, it went live and within a couple, just first thing in the morning, they already made $2,000 for local businesses. And so if you go into Royal Gorgeous Deals and you purchase from our local businesses, they get all of that money back to them into their pockets to help get them by these next few months. For a lot of people, it's going to take a while before they really start seeing their income come back in and they have a lot of back bills that need to be paid. And so if you can support our, our businesses by getting onto that website, that'd be absolutely fantastic to do that. Other communities are popping up everywhere, Pueblo, Durango, Chaffey County already did it, tons of other towns are. And we are one of the beginners to do it and right behind Chaffey County. And please, I'd like to see us raise a lot of money for those businesses to support them. Councilmember Meisner.
Hey, we have a vision meeting.
That's right. Vision meeting, Wednesday, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
It will be virtual as well. Yeah. Let's see, it says that there is a question from the community and that's about the guidelines for like massage therapists and stuff. And all those details for those guidelines coming from the state. We don't have all the details, it's going to be a little while before we get all the particular details. Ryan, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just as we get those details out, we, or as we receive them, we'll, we'll be getting them out. So we kind of expect that it's going to go very similar to how things were shut down. We, we're going to be getting guidance on a daily or maybe even hourly basis and we'll try and keep up with it and get that information out as fast as we can.
Awesome. All right. So let's go ahead and move on to our administrator report and the review of the agenda and consent agenda, please.
All right, item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on April 6th. The special city council meeting, which was the city-city-county meeting on April 13th and general government committee meeting on April 8th. 8B is to receive and file the first quarter 2020 budget transfers that were under $5,000. 8C is the monthly budget summary and 8D is to receive and file a list of bills.
And Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and Council, I moved, we approved the consent agenda and the regular agenda as printed.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Meisner and seconded by Gonzalez. I'll take a roll call for vote, please.
Wait, can I?
Oh, yes, discussion first.
I, I just want to, I want to ask a silly question because there was only one question I had in this whole packet. And it was, why, why are we buying duck and goose food?
I'm sorry, you kind of broke up there, what was that?
There, there's a, a charge for $50.58 to Frontier Feeds for goose and duck food.
Duck park.
Yeah.
Okay, I was racking my brain trying to figure out why. Oh, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
It's for the council luncheon.
We're going to need it after all this staying home.
Any more discussion? All right, then I will call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hocken.
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
Councilmember B Smith.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
All right, so it has been voted by unanimous vote and we'll go ahead and move on to the city administrators' report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. We want to give staff kudos to the finance department for their hard work preparing this year's CAFR, that's the Comprehensive Audit Financial Report. We received a certificate of achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association and special recognition goes to Rebecca Nelson who compiled that report. We, last week, we participated in the Downtown Colorado Inc. Challenge Summit. It was a little bit different than in years past due to COVID. But we did have a, you know, good session, there's some good speakers on Tuesday and then we had the Canyon City specific session on Wednesday. The graduate student that's working with us, Devin Clark, she is going to be compiling the reports based on those discussions and provide us with some action plans for moving forward. And then in August, hopefully we'll still be able to have the actual in-person Downtown Colorado Inc. Summit and we will, we will do additional work around the challenge studio then. Item number three, the 2A North 9th Street bid, we were originally going to bring that to council May 4th, we'll actually be discussing that as item 15 in today's meeting. Water Department's, it's been completing a lot of different work around the city. They've completed some work up at Dawson Ranch in anticipation for the stormwater projects. They've just recently completed some work along 9th Street, they're going to be going back for some additional work over there for that road project coming up. And right now they're working on installing water main, replacing water main over on Eighth and Bridge for that project that's, will be paving that dirt road here in the near future. They have received the equipment for the bulk water station and once they have completed the project work at Eighth and Bridge and over at 9th Street, they'll start putting together the new bulk water station. That should be completed by the middle of May. As you may see around town, some of the wayfinding directional signs are going in, that's, that work will continue to go on throughout the month. And even though a lot of our restaurants and businesses are shut down, we are still receiving applications for new liquor licenses. And, you know, I, I think that's a good sign, hopefully for things to come and that we are still trying to move the, the economy forward and bring and welcome new businesses to the community. And then finally, in the packet, there's a letter from CDOTS, we received some additional multimodal funding projects for the pedestrian crossing and designing some lights and along East Highway 50 to put in lights over there. And be very dark. And that award letter, as I mentioned, is attached.
All right, is there any questions for Ryan? We'll start with Dolly Gonzalez, please.
It is just real simple, I, I got on to attend the DCI and I couldn't get my Zoom to work, so I wound up calling in and I didn't get, attend what I wanted to. I went to a completely different session. Ryan, is there a way to view or listen in on a recording of how that went?
Was that on Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I know some of those sessions were pre-recorded, so I will see if I can get it.
Okay. That'd be great, if you could just email me a link or something, that'd be great. Thank you.
And Councilmember Meisner.
Ryan, in the wayfinding directional signs, is, is the tunnel drive, does that get a notation there?
Yeah, I don't remember offhand, but we can look into that for you.
I'm just referring to the email that we, that somebody, I at least received in regards to.
Adam, do you, for that?
Yeah, we, are we talking about wayfinding directional signs for tunnel drive? There will be some there on 50, yes.
Okay, thanks, Adam.
Are there any other questions or comments from city council? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to item number 10, the consideration adoption by title only of Resolution 10 Series of 2020. And that is authorizing the transfer of budgeted funds within the 2020 budget of the city, of Canyon City. And Ryan, I will give that to you to give a report on you and Tammy, I guess.
Yeah, actually, Tammy, do you want to go ahead and give a report on this, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Before you, you have Resolution 10, which is authorizing transfers of budgeted funds among line items for 2020. The items are over $5,000. And so that is required for council to approve that before we can make those transfers. The largest portion of the transfers are coming from the reorganization of the Long Range Planning Department. And those funds are moving to planning and zoning, economic development. And then we're also moving funds from, let's say, our salary line item for full-time employees to part-time employees. When I had prepared the budget, I lumped everything under one line item other than into the two. So some of this is cleaning that up. We're anticipating that those salary adjustments between, between each of those line items, this should be the only time we have to do it this year for the full-time and part-time. And that is a brief summary of what we are requesting.
Councilmember Meisner.
So with the reorganization of economic development, are we saving any money?
Yes, there, there will be some savings there. Some of that is, you know, the creation of. Some of that is, you know, the creation of, you know, splitting the Economic Development Director role into a manager role and then that mainstream position, which we currently have on hold. But there, there should be some additional salary savings there as well.
Any other questions or comments from city council? All right, then I will call for a motion, please. Councilmember Meisner.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Resolution 10 Series of 21820.
Second.
All right, that's been moved by Meisner, seconded by Brandon Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? Then I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Hakez.
Yes.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
Councilmember Bee Smith.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
All right, the motion is carried. And we'll move on to item number 11. And that's the consideration and adoption by title only, Resolution 12 Series of 2020. This is a resolution extending a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Canyon City, Colorado. I'm Ryan Stephens. Can you please give a report?
So when we originally adopted the disaster declaration, we had an expiration date of today, April 20th. Because it continues to be a very fluid situation and we don't know the effect of this disaster on our economy, I'm asking that council extend this disaster declaration indefinitely until a point where council feels it, it's safe to change that and, and the disaster declaration.
Any comments? Councilman Meisner.
Corey, obviously, we've got the authority to extend that indefinitely.
Yes, you do. And, and the, the disaster declaration is unrelated to the stay-at-home or safer-at-home declarations of the state level. It's much more localized and has a different purpose. So the answer is yes.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Gonzalez.
Would it, would it be prudent to put a revisit date on this? Or is that not necessary?
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, we, we can, we can put a revision date or, you know, have it, you know, just put a reminder to revisit on a, you know, a month or every other month basis. Absolutely. We can do that at staff level. I don't know that needs to be included in the resolution itself.
Okay.
And Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ryan or Corey, could you, could you tell us a little bit exactly what powers or parts of our city charter that this activates? The, I think it's important for our citizens to know that, that this is, you know, exactly what we're talking about here so that we, so that there's not any misunderstandings.
Well, yeah, I'll let Corey talk here. You know, I think the one thing that's important for, you know, part of this disaster declaration is, you know, the, the ability to be eligible for some of the, the funding that might come down because of disaster and the economic impact that it's going to have on us, especially as we move into some of the busier season for our retailers and for the Royal Gorge Bridge and not knowing what that impact's going to be on the community as a whole and what that budget impact's going to be. But I'll, I'll let Corey go into some of the more details as far as the charter goes.
And I think Ryan answered the question perfectly. This disaster declaration is actually a disaster declaration that is under state law. So whether it's home rule municipalities such as Canyon or statutory communities and counties across the state, the disaster declaration is not about home rule authority or giving authority under the charter. It's making the city eligible for assistance that might be available under the State Disaster Emergency Act. At a previous meeting, the council had asked that we put together a draft ordinance related to emergency powers for use if we need it. We're bringing that forward. But this, this is unrelated to the city somehow having to, having to exert any emergency authority.
I will add one more thing, Jim, before we, or before we go to you. And that is that when we pass this resolution today and it gets signed, we actually have to give this to the SCDPHE and file it with them. And I believe they file it with the state as well. And also in Governor Polis's update today is, we are in a marathon. We're still on that marathon. The reacting to the global pandemic of COVID-19 is going to be a long-term thing until we have a vaccine and/or the herd immunity has taken its full effect. And so we, we aren't out of the clear yet as far as this goes. Councilman Meisner, please.
Maybe to address Dolly's concern is Ryan, in your administrative report, is if you could just put a line item there to give us an update each report in terms of where we're at with, when we need to readdress that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
I think monthly would be good.
Dolly?
That's, that's kind of what I was asking for, was just need an update. Let's revisit it. You know, because like I said earlier, this thing is, but it changes from hour to hour. And, and there may be more information to give us in two weeks rather than a month, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll, you'll continue to get updates regarding COVID-19. But we'll make sure that we update as far as the emergency declaration on a monthly basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim and Ryan.
Any other comments from our council members? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion then. I'm Councilmember Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we adopt a resolution extending emergency declaration. Approve Resolution 12 Series of 2020, extending the emergency disaster declaration indefinitely.
Second.
So that has been moved by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Any discussion on the motion? Then I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hakez.
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
Councilmember Bee Smith.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
Okay, it has passed by unanimous vote. And we will now move on to item number 12, which is the second reading and adoption by title only, Ordinance 5 Series of 2020. This is amending sections 2.64.035 and 2.65.040 of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning meetings of and vacancies on the Library Museum Advisory Board. Staff?
Yeah, this is second reading. We don't have any additional public comments. Just to remind council, this is to go from monthly board meetings to no less than quarterly. And then also to loosen up some of the restrictions on who can serve on the board. As I mentioned, this is the second reading and staff would recommend approval.
Any discussion? I'd like to call for a motion, please. Councilman Meisner.
I'll do it. Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 5 Series to, or 2020. Second reading.
Second.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Meisner, seconded by Gonzalez. Any discussion on the motion? And I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hakez.
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
Councilmember Bee Smith.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
Excellent. So another, um, motion has been adopted by unanimous vote. We'll now move on to item number 13. This is also a second reading and adoption of Ordinance 6, 2020. And this is for the rezoning of certain real property within the city of Canyon City.
Again, this is a second reading. We do not have any additional public comments or additional changes from staff. We would recommend approval on second reading.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Madam Mayor, Council, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 6 Series of 2020 on second reading.
It has been moved by Councilmember Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Hakez. Is there any discussion on the motion? And I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hakez.
Hi.
Councilmember Meisner.
Hi.
Councilmember Reed.
Hi.
Councilmember Bee Smith.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Hi.
Six Series of 2020 has passed by unanimous vote. We will move on to number 14, which is an introduction on first reading by title only, an ordinance that has been in play for over a year now. It's been through a number of committees and most recently a panel of all user groups, including the horse user group, ATVs, Fremont Adventure Recreation Staff and Council. And that is ordinance number eight, Series of 2020. An ordinance of the city of Canyon City amending sections 9.44.060A and 9.46.020 of the Municipal Code concerning the riding of certain animals in city parks and no, I'll turn it over to you, Ryan.
All right. As the mayor mentioned, there have been several committee meetings. Most recently, just a couple of weeks ago, there was a multi-trail user group that, that met to discuss this topic. Currently, the city of Canyon City has no ordinance prohibiting horseback riding in any of our city parks or city-owned systems. The attached ordinance would amend sections of the municipal code to give city officials the ability to regulate equestrian use on all city-owned parks and trails. And I guess at this point, we turn that over to council for questions.
I, one of my questions is, did we get any comments or feedback or communication from the public for today, for tonight's meeting?
I have not received any. Cindy, have you received any requests to speak on this topic? I see that Ashley S. is in the attendee area and I don't know, I'm assuming that's Ashley Sack. I don't know if you want to pull her over to make a public comment or not. Ashley Sack, of course, is from Fremont Adventure Recreation.
And I have not received anything coming in on this topic.
Okay. I would like to read aloud a comment made on Facebook by Sean Anderson. Says, "Let them ride their animals and leave it alone." I, I would like to invite Ashley Sack if she wishes. Let's put her on the panel and give her the opportunity to speak if she would like. She was at this meeting. And I, I kept notes. I attended that meeting and I tried to keep really thorough notes. I, I emailed those to the council members. I would like to recap some of the highlights from that meeting. The big takeaways were that we had proposed doing a 2.5-mile horse trail at Royal, Royal Gorge Park. And the horse user group said that is just not long enough. Even if we added more loops to that to make it longer, it just wasn't enough to make it worth loading up their horses and traveling that far to do that short of a loop. They would prefer trails that they could ride for at least two hours on. Red Canyon definitely was the most popular place to pursue more trail building for horses particularly. And there's a lot of awesome options for that that they have already exploring. And looking at, I'm sure Ashley Sack can go ahead on that and tell us more about that. It was also determined at the end that we needed to go ahead and bring this ordinance now to the council because there's already quite a bit of horse activity at the Royal Gorge Park, a lot of damage. And the longer that we wait, the harder it will be to move forward. We've already carried this over for an entire year, looking for the best-case solutions that we could. And it's just time to move on. And the most important thing from this meeting, I think, was that we do need to create a formal mixed user group committee to meet regularly and to work out all of these conflicts between the user groups and have it taken out of the political realm and put into them to have them come up with the solutions, the compromises, and work out the details on future trail building. And another takeaway I gave to, to the group too is that the only reason why these trails are here in the first place is because the grassroots group organized it. They raised money for it. They petitioned city to support, give them the green thumbs to go ahead, and they became good partners. And for any future trails that will be built, including at Red Canyon, it's going to take that same grassroots efforts and fundraising to do it, especially as the city is making, will probably have to make some pretty major budget cuts for COVID-19. We don't, there's not going to be a lot of extra room for, for, I guess you say, the fun stuff. We're going to be back to bare bones in a lot of ways, depending on how this economy works out. So I just wanted to offer that report for you and also for the repu, the public to know that we did meet with them. We did have an awesome discussion. And those were the takeaways from it. And we do have a plan to move forward in the future to listen to those user groups. And with that said, I see that Ashley Sack is on the panelist. And Ashley, would you like to address the council before we open up to discussion?
Thank you very much for allowing me to be here and thanks for the second reading or the reading of this ordinance. I'm more than happy to explain to anyone the difference between a multi-use trail and a purpose-built mountain bike trail. And I think it's important to stress that those are two very different things. And Far was very excited to build these trails and assist in the completion of those trails as a mountain bike facility. So thank you for the meeting last week. That was excellent. I think we made some great progress. And I'd love to answer any questions that I can.
I'm Ashley. My favorite part of your message was listening to your sweet little boys in the background and their laughter and enthusiasm. And it totally just flashed in my mind, just as I've been getting out onto the trails. We have so, such a variety of trails throughout Fremont County. And during our state home orders, we're still can get out and get fresh air. And it has been awesome to see our community en masse coming to these trails and taking advantage of them. We built them for us here locally. It's awesome that tourists come, but it's for us. And they've been taking advantage of it. And I've seen a lot of happy little faces, like the sounds of your boys', boys' voices that have been enjoying that opportunity to be outdoors. And it's been awesome to see that. I think Jim raised his hand first. We'll go to Jim and then Dolly.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll do one and then let Dolly go. The, the trails that exist up in the park, it was suggested that those were, those, those trails were created with, without any city funds? Is that the case?
Well, there were some city funds contributed, but they were matching. But Ashley, maybe you can explain more.
Sure. We contributed to the effort. We've contributed over $60,000 for trails in the area. We essentially started the project and worked with the city and worked with the trail builder to begin the project. And then the city also has kicked in funds in the last couple of years to bring the project to completion. And part of the funds that we have utilized, sorry. utilized, sorry, I'm going to try to help my kids be quiet.
I love it.
Part of the funds that we've utilized are the one percent for trails program that we initiated a couple of years ago. Um, and that's generated enough funds for us to continue to assist the city in paying for the trail system. And then also, we, we also assist in buying some other projects and, um, materials for the trail builder, any equipment that he needs, he can come to us, and we will pay for things like equipment or also larger equipment to be, to come in and, and complete the trails. So, no, we did not pay for the entire system. We certainly began the project, assisted with it, and the city has certainly helped bring that project to completion.
So, Dolly?
I don't, I don't really have a question. I just, um, kind of want to echo what, um, mayor had said about the trails being, um, you know, built for us, and it's really nice to see people utilizing them. Um, I've, I've always kind of gotten out on the trails, but not as much as I have more recently. We've just bought new bikes and, um, you know, been exploring more trails as we've had more time on the weekends. And, um, I, I just want to say that, um, if you haven't been out to go, to go explore some of them, you need to. It just gets you out. It, it's a great resource for a community that we've been able to access through these trying times, and it's really helped keep me and my family sane by getting out there. But, but what I, what I want to say in the end is that, um, when we allow animals and, um, you know, different things other than what they're intended for on these trails, they're not going to be there for years to come, and I think that they're just a amazing asset to have to our community. And, um, you know, when, when you're riding over, um, horse poop in your bike, that's not very much fun. So, um, you know, I, I just want to say that they're a great resource, and we really need to, to be, um, you know, taking care of them for years to come.
Thank you, Dolly. Is there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Meisner?
So, my second question is maybe two-part. Is, was mentioned that the loop that we were talking about was, was about two-point-five miles? What, what's the length of? Is there an average length of a trail up there now, Ashley? What kind of lengths are we looking at? And that would be Ashley Schleck.
So, the, the trail that I think we were discussing building would be a completely separate trail.
Right.
It's more appropriate for horses, had a larger, larger corridor, maybe been wider, not so much exposure. The trails up there, I mean, they're anything from one-point-five miles to two miles, I think might be the longest one trail within that system. You can generally get about one mile of trail, um, out of ten acres, which is one of the reasons we kind of were looking at that Red Canyon area, because you have six hundred acres out there that you could get a significant amount of trails that would be multi-use built and, and would offer a more, maybe appropriate and more expansive area for building something that could really be a lot of fun for, for multi-use. But yes, anything from a mile, I guess, to answer your question, anything from a mile to two miles is any one specific trail up there. But the vast majority of them were, are pretty specifically built for human-powered recreation, just due to the fact of the corridor, how big it was built, the exposure that close to the rim of the gorge, et cetera.
So, one of the complaints is, is that, so apparently the, the horse riders, when they're going up there, they must be riding on multiple trails at the same time?
So I mean, you go from, let's say you started at the large parking lot at the top, you would ride Canyon Rim, and that segues into Canyon Vista, which segues into Far Out. You know, they just, they're, they're continuous. Um, it's like a, you know, it's like a maze up there. So you go from one trail to the other without even sometimes really knowing that you've, you've segwayed from one trail to the next. So I think we talked originally about maybe saying, well, let's have this trail open for multi-use and this trail open to, um, you know, just mountain bikes and hikers, which would make it very confusing, we think, because oftentimes you don't know that you're segueing from one trail to the next because they're meant to, you know, flow. There's no stopping point. And all of a sudden, you're on a new trail.
Any more questions? Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, on the Red Canyon Park, do we have restrictions on how horses and riders can use that park right now? I mean, if I took a, a horse and trailer up there, could I just ride wherever I wanted? Guess that'd be for you, Ryan.
Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, there, there isn't as expans, as an expansive, uh, trail system out there, so. Uh, but yeah, we, um, you know, this, this ordinance would give us the ability to determine whether or not we want to allow those, uh, that particular use, whether it's in Red Canyon or not.
Um, something I forgot to mention was that the BLM was also on that meeting that we had, and I just want to make sure they get recognition for that, as well as, um, the Parks and Recreation District cowhorn was there as well. BLM didn't mention that all of their trails that they build, they plan for mixed-user groups. That's their vision and their mission. And Rex Brady expressed that part of his vision too is to look more towards multi-use trail building that's done by the city in the future. Councilman Meisner?
Well, one of the concerns that just kind of came to me is the fact that we're talking about approving this resolution because there's opportunity available at Red Canyon Park, but I, I think I interpreted Ryan as saying that we're not sure that that's an option.
Well, I, I think, you know, one of the, one of the comments that came out of the trail user group, and I think it was a very specific question that was asked of the backcountry horsemen, is whether or not there are enough trail groups or trail, uh, places to ride their horses locally, and I believe that answer was yes. That they, you know, they felt that there were plenty of places for them to ride. Um, and, you know, a, again, this ordinance gives us the authority, so i, if we want to allow horse use within Red Canyon Park, we, we can do that.
Um, I'd like to acknowledge that there's a comment on Facebook about horses at Red Canyon Park. This is from Seda Moss. Says, "Now you have me concerned about building a bunch of multi-use trails in Red Canyon Park. That park has a lot of fragile soils." I would like to make note that historically, that the city has put a lot of effort into protecting Red Canyon Park. It's, and we just don't build trails anywhere, any, you know, just anywhere, anyhow. We actually have a professional that maps those out and takes into consideration the soils. If we do have trails that are combined with BLM, there's actually a lot of studies that have to be done on those soils and, and for protection of plants in those areas, and so they are very carefully and responsibly considered when they're designed. Anything else? Councilman Meisner?
Well, I'm going to go back and say, it seems like at, at some point, if this ordinance felt comfortable because there was the Red Canyon option available, but the more that we talk about Red Canyon, it seems like that that may not be an option.
But I think it's also important to remember that there are trails all over Fremont County that are open to horses. There's more trails open to horses than there are to bikes. And so we aren't limiting, um, they have tons of opportunities, and, and this is the ordinance, we're comfortable with passing this through that meeting that we had with the user groups.
Yeah, I, I would go on to say that, you know, Red Canyon Park, as, as the mayor mentioned, you know, the trail builder has, has looked at it and is looking at mapping out specific horse trails, and Rex Brady, our Parks Director, feels very confident that Red Canyon can be accommodated for horse use as well.
Any more comments? Are we ready to move on to a motion? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Would it be possible to delay this thing now so that we can get some kind of a concept from, um, the Parks Department or whoever we need to do with regards to Red Canyon Park now, because that seems to be the hot topic with regards to a lot of trails here and a lot of trails there. It doesn't, we, we know the one out there, the other area, isn't quite big enough for everything for horse riders. But now we're talking with Red Canyon Park, but we don't actually have a, 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 a plan, site plan, or anything that says, okay, out there, there are actually one, two, ten, twenty trails out there that could accommodate horse riding. And I think maybe we can do some more research into that and come back and bring this back, so we have a, a clearer idea to let the citizens know what we're talking about. And that's based on the email that you just got with regards to somebody being concerned with the failed soil and all this other stuff. So, right now, the way I'm looking at it, it's almost like, hey, go all the way up to Red Canyon Park and ride your horse wherever you want.
Um, I don't believe we're encouraging people to ride their horse wherever they want in Red Canyon. It's just that that will be the next emphasis of looking to
I know we're not encouraging, but I mean, the way the conversation is going, that's basically, if people are listening to this and they're getting the same thing that I'm getting out of it, they may, that may be the feeling that they're having. That's why you had an email with a concern from a citizen with regards to the soil and being tender and all this other stuff. And I think we need to look at this thing a lot more, and maybe we can bring this back at a later day with more information as it deals with Red Canyon Park.
So, um, I think this ordinance is independent of Red Canyon Park. Also Rex Brady, after this meeting, he has, um, told me, um, he wants to see this ordinance passed and passed now. That's from our department head at the Parks Department. Councilmember Meisner?
Well, I, I appreciate Rex's love and desire for that, but if we pass this ordinance, when it becomes effective, you cannot ride a horse in Red Canyon Park because it's not posted as being an allowable activity. Is that not true? Corey? Ryan?
We, we can put up signs allowing, you know, the, the horse, uh, horse riding, you know, given, you know, the, the availability of park or trails, or it might even be on, on roads initially within Red Canyon Park.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I think what we have before us is a resolution to protect the Royal Gorge, a trail system that we have in place right now. What this also does is this puts a pause on riding in Red Canyon so that we can look at, uh, you know, some of these issues. Are there soils issues? Are there other issues that need to be addressed before we let people, um, you know, just ride wherever they want, uh, in Red Canyon? So I, I think that this is, this is a good resolution. It does what we want in the Royal Gorge. Uh, it will protect, uh, you know, Red Canyon. The proper way for this to happen now is if the Horse Riders Association wants to use Red Canyon. They need to come to the city with some solutions, like Ashley, our mayor, has, uh, has, has recommended. They need to come to the, the city with solutions and, uh, some resources to help us, uh, you know, carry out any vision that they may have for horseback riding in that part. But this resolution seems timely and appropriate to me.
And I did review my notes from our meeting, and the, um, the Rocky Mountain Horsemen, they say they already are riding their horses up at Red Canyon at Seep Springs. And there's, it's attached to BLM, and there's a lot of BLM land out there that they're already taking advantage of for horse riding. Now, if Seep Springs is a part of the city's portion, I don't know that, but I, I definitely don't want to keep them from riding existing trails that they're already using or have access to.
But if this is passed, they can't do that.
What do you recommend, Ryan?
Again, this, well, you know, this is an ordinance. Uh, it is a first reading of the ordinance. Uh, if council wanted to pass it on first reading, we could bring back additional information for the second reading.
Councilman Meisner?
What? I mean, if the concern with FAR and everybody else is, is the trails up at Royal Gorge Park, why don't you just say that in terms of the verbiage, that, that it's prohibited in the Royal Gorge Park? And then we've addressed the specific concern, and we can leave everything else as it is.
Well, I, I think the concern, concern is beyond just Royal Gorge Park. It's, uh, you know, we, we have, we have had issues, uh, in Centennial Park and along the River Walk as well.
And I believe in our discussion that we were not, um, banning horse riding on the River Walk necessarily. There are parts of the River Walk that they can and can't ride on already.
Is that our trail?
Parts of it is and parts of it isn't.
Well, the parts of it that belong to the city, they can't ride on based on this ordinance.
Unless it's otherwise marked.
What's your plans for marking it?
Well, my discussions with Rex along the River Walk were that we were going to be consistent all the way along the River Walk, which, I believe the, the Rex district does not allow horseback riding on their portion of, of the River Walk.
Got a bad taste.
So I think that's something that we need to take into consideration because that's not consistent with the discussion I remember having with the user group, River Walk. We, we didn't have an interest in keeping the existing use that's already done at the River Walk, of changing that. And so I think our verbiage needs to be, um, taken care of according to that, out of respect for that. Um, and maybe Rex, maybe double-check with Rex on that. But, but as far as our city parks too, we've had some incidences of people sitting at barrel racing at Centennial Park, and and that's another part of protecting the parks in general.
So are we just going to table this for now, or? What, what is our direction here?
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I, I, I respect one of our director's opinions, but, uh, he's ultimately not responsible for, to our constituents, and we are. And what we're talking about here is eliminating horseback riding in a number of areas and on a blanket basis, and I, there may be another approach. I, I mean, we can't even decide here whether you can or you cannot ride on the, on the River, on the River Walk. So we've already got some issues that become a, become a problem, but soon as this ordinance is passed, any of those and all of those places are excluded.
Well, Dolly, go ahead.
So, I can, I can sympathize from where you're coming from because I, I, I also know people who ride horses and I, I don't really care for the fact that the city would be in charge of, of deciding where horses can and cannot be. Can, can we come up with a, a plan of action of, of what trails are, are planning to be on that, that list?
It just seems like. Go ahead, Mayor.
The simplest thing is to amend the resolution for Royal Gorge Park and our city urban parks. And just leave it as is for now, and it can always be changed in the future if it's needs to be changed, but the main point is to protect our urban parks and to protect our man-powered or human-powered trails at the Royal Gorge Park. That was the intention.
And I, I can, I can agree with both, so that's what makes this so difficult.
Well.
Because I think there's one, one possible solution. Either decide as a group that, do we want to just table this for another timeframe, or somebody make a motion to pass the ordinance as it read and, um, first reading, and then we can vote either yes or no.
Councilman Meisner?
And I would at least propose amendment, if that's appropriate at this stage, that we, we modify item 11 on section two, that after prohibited would be in the Royal Gorge Park area. And if that makes sense, then I would make that amendment that we could vote on. That makes sense on 11?
Say it again.
Well, in section two, item 11, it would read, "The riding or leading of horses of any hoofed animals is prohibited in the Royal Gorge Park area except as areas designated", which apparently there wouldn't be any up there. But at least that section is specific to the Royal Gorge Park, which acknowledges the efforts and, and monies that have been spent by FAR. But we're not just doing a blanket prohibiting, prohibiting horses everywhere.
Corey, the, the way I'm reading the ordinance, we can post to allow those uses, correct? This, this doesn't necessarily prohibit specifically. It gives us a little bit of leeway to post whether or not that use is allowed. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And I guess, as I'm listening to this conversation, you know, my, if council is so inclined, it seems to me that staff could, if this was approved on first reading as drafted, between first and second reading, staff could come back with a proposed plan of where signage would be allowed, posted specifically to allow horse, you know, horse riding. But Councilmember Meisner is absolutely correct. This presumptively says that trails are going to be closed to horses unless it's posted as allowed. And so, having the staff come out with a plan for the horse, the trails that, the locations where it's allowed, I think would resolve many of the questions tonight.
That, that's what I, I would propose as well. You know, we can come back at second reading with different trail designations and whether or not horseback riding would be allowed within each of those specific areas.
I would be satisfied with that.
And I'd like to point out that the Canyon City Recreation District on their website does say that the River Walk Trail is open to many uses, which include running, walking, biking, and even horseback riding on the John Griffin Park Bluff Trail. And so, I just want to reiterate that. In that user group meeting we had, we didn't want to change horses on the city part of the River Walk. So, that would be, we need to take that into consideration on the.
You go back to Ashley's comment, that if it's going to be allowed on, on the Rec Trail, you got to have a stop sign there when you get into the city portion of the trail. Otherwise, you have people in violation and not even realizing it.
But they want to be able to ride on the city portion. And we, and that was agreed among, at that meeting. And I think we need to respect that.
Yeah, and I, I may have had my wires crossed. You know, what Rex told me is we were going to be consistent with what the Rec District was doing on that trail. So, I thought it was prohibited. That, that was my mistake.
And I think there are some trails up at Temple Canyon Park, too. And I'm assuming there might be horses leather. So, I think we just really need to focus on the Royal Gorge Park.
I agree. I don't have a problem with the Royal Gorge, and considering what other parties have done there, I'm trying to be open to their efforts. But to just blindly say, "All parks and trails" is crazy.
So, one more comment from the public is how much are the signs going to cost? The budget is going to get very tight. I just want to say that signs are actually really cheap and easily obtained at a very low cost. I don't think, the, the way we're drafting the ordinance with amendments, there's not going to be need for very many signs whatsoever. So, would we like to make an, I'd like to propose a motion, as Corey, our attorney, suggested, as passing it as is on upon first reading. Let's staff get the wording done correctly and really well for, based on the intentions and the conversation that we've had tonight. And then we can pass it upon second reading with those changes made. So, I'd like to entertain a motion, if that's what council wishes.
Go for it, Jim.
I'm not, I, you know, I'm not doing a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance number eight, series of 2020, on first reading with the added direction to staff to bring back for second reading specifics on where horseback riding will be allowed and will not be allowed, especially to make sure that we have consistent uses with the Recreation District and, and the results of the meeting that the mayor attended.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, there's been a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, a second by Gonzalez. Is there any discussion on the motion? I do want to acknowledge a statement made on the Facebook feed by Tim McCain. He wants to know if the multi-use, you know, future consideration of multi-use on trails includes motorized vehicles. And that will, I would say that as far as for future trail building, that's going to totally depend on this committee that we are formulating for them to work those things out. And also that they would probably need to come to the table with money to help pay and buy those, but, and pay for those trails for ATVs. That's a whole different, that's a whole different conversation. But Tim McCain was at that user group meeting, and we'll certainly invite him to participate in our future committee. Any discussion by council? Then I'll ask for a roll call on the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakez?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Bee Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
So, the motion has carried four to two, and we will look forward to seeing the revamped wording for the second meeting. Just for the public to know, the second reading, that'll be in two weeks. And that is time for the public to reach out to city council, as well if you have any added concerns or comments that you would like to make. But I particularly want to thank the trail, the multi-user group committee that we had on the ninth. And I'm looking forward to meeting with them more in the future. As, and I guess I'd say to Ryan, we need to bring to city council, I don't know if it's a draft or an ordinance or whatever, a resolution to form this multi-use committee in the first place, and then ask for letters of intent to be, to be included onto that meeting. And the city council will approve the members of that committee. And we want to make sure that we have equal representation from each user group and the different stakeholders, such as BLM and the Parks and Recreation District and such.
We can start working on that.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to our last item for the evening, and that's number 15, to award a bid number 15 dash 20 to Avalanche Escavating, a carryout amount of $3,270,323.76 with a 10% contendancy. Can we have a report from staff, please?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Adam to do the report. But before we do that, this, this is a convergence of several different projects, the two-way project, storm water, and redoing water lines. And staff has put considerable amount of time into this, and we were very happy with the results that we got out of this bid. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Adam for additional details.
Yeah, with that, there is not much more to add. Again, just a reminder of what the project is. It's, it's the reconstruction of Ninth Street from US 50 to Mystic Avenue. And that includes a installation of a new 36-inch water storm sewer and an 8-inch water main. As, as mentioned, we've included the bid tabs in, in the packet. We got three bids, all really good bids. We could have truly went with any of the bids and bidders. So, we feel really good. Ended up being a very competitive process, went really well in, in the use of our new BidNet tool for a project this large. And so, we are pleased with it. And as noted, we recommend award to Avalanche Excavation in Canyon City.
Just one, one other note. We had originally talked about bringing this to council on May 4th. Adam, can you talk a little bit about why the, why we're rushing this a little bit, why we amended the agenda to get it in today?
Sure. That was at the request of our little bidder, Avalanche. They are concerned, rightfully so, we believe, about the volatility of, of traffic on US 50, depending on what happens with stay-at-home orders and so forth. And so, if they are awarded the project, they would like to get started on that section of the project to do it when, when traffic is low.
Makes sense.
Councilmember Meisner?
Adam, what was the, what was the budget on this?
So, that's part of the good news. So, our original budget, we had just over $6 million for this project. And we had a significant savings on the storm sewer portion of this. So, you may remember from the award on the Dawson Ranch elements, we were about $300,000 in the red. This bid will put us about $2 million in the black on the storm water budget, which is really good news, because we are fretting about the budget for the East Canyon projects. We knew already that our estimates were off for that, and our engineers have told us so. So, that gives us a lot more breathing room to do it right on those projects to the east. And then there are, the bid, the bid came in lower on water and street as well. Our, our estimate on the street was just under $2 million, and the estimate for water was at $600,000, when we budgeted last year. And then again, you can see the adjustments that were made based on estimate on the design. And the, interestingly enough, my engineer's estimate is still quite a bit higher than everybody else's. I was about three and a half million, but we had a wild card because of that US 50 traffic control piece. And so, at the last minute, I bumped up my numbers there, just in case we had some trouble there with the bids. But like I said, the bids came in really well, very competitive. I'm comfortable. They all really did their homework. We had lots of good questions through the bidding process, a lot of participation. So, that's where we're at budget-wise. We're looking really good.
Adam, do you think one of the reasons why we had such competitive bids is because at this time Canyon City has an independent designated fund for two-way funds, and we already have the funding in place for the storm water, whereas a lot of our, our competitive cities around us that have been taking our business away from us, or, or they've been busy working in Colorado Springs and don't have ti, didn't have time for Canyon City, now, now they're cutting their budgets because of COVID. But because we have these dedicated funds, we became more attractive and were able to solicit these, these competitive numbers.
Yeah, that was definitely part of the conversation during the bidding process. We had a lot of concern from the bidders that we were committed to the project and had the funding. And their, and their bonding companies were just as interested. So, I think that definitely played into it.
That's good news. Councilmember Meisner?
Adam and Ryan, you'd both, or at least Adam had mentioned some kind of a bid packet. An email that I've got with the modified agenda, I don't see any bid packet in there.
Yeah, you should, you should have received a bid tab in, with my memo.
Oh, that wasn't part of the email from the, from the clerk?
It would have came with the email with my memo, yeah. So, but anyway, that, that breakdown, I can give that to you. I mean, if you're looking at, so grand total, grand total for Avalanche was just over 3.5 million. TZAC, heavy equipment, was next in line, just over 4 million. And Key West was third place at 4.2 million.
And that, that should have been the third attachment on the amended agenda.
I don't got any attachments.
I did receive mine.
Mine, John. Make me look bad.
Yeah, I got it, too.
All right, whatever.
I didn't get it, Jim. It's okay. I didn't get it either.
Thank you, Dolly. So, the point is, we're, we've got, we're saving about $2 million that could be used for the roads project or extending Ninth Street. Is that an option?
I would say no, because of our timeline. One, we've already committed to the roads and, and the WPA projects, which we are struggling with budget on those. So, this gives us more breathing room there. By the time we got more Ninth Street designed, we would, I think we're going to run out of time.
What do you mean by time? Time with what?
We've got to get it designed and built before we run out of time for the extent of the COPs next year.
The storm water COPs, we had to, we have to spend them within three years and ready when you're down.
Yeah, we got to, we have to spend it by March of next year.
All right. Whatever it's worth, I would, I need to talk to the, to Ryan and, and the mayor about roads.
Yeah, I would like to get a report on that. I think the biggest celebration here is that Ninth Street is getting done. Since day one of starting to fix streets, people have said, "What about Ninth Street? We've got to do Ninth Street." It's horrible, but we had to be able to fix the water lines and the storm water underneath, and the utilities needed to be done. And now we're able to afford to get it done. This is a huge step forward in getting our streets better in Canyon City. So, I'm really excited about that.
I know. But if you look at Ninth Street, I, I think the roughest section of Ninth Street hasn't even been touched. I mean, north of Mystic is, is almost four-wheel drive.
Yeah, well, that's about every other section of Canyon City, too. East Canyon, too. East Canyon's really bad, too. Dolly Gonzalez?
So, while we have Adam here on the phone, I, and we're talking about streets. Do you remember last year, we had talked about on college, when we got ready to do some of that, seeing about putting in some kind of bike, bike lane along there? Has that been discussed further, or is that just kind of been put on the back burner?
We've discussed it. We're not ready to redo that street. I think, and even related to the last discussion with the mobility and the multi-use trails, I think some of that needs to be held off until we're done doing our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And the comprehensive plan does include a, you know, mobility plan, including looking at, at biking and bike lanes.
And, and Jim, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we don't want what we currently have, this kind of a hot podge of stuff put together. We, we want that to be cohesive with long-term planning.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I also wanted to remind Jim Meisner that the reason why we're doing Highway 50 to Mystic is because of the storm water. We had to start at the river and work our way north.
I, I understand that. But if we have monies, we're not addressing the worst part of Ninth Street from a surface standpoint.
I think what we're hearing is that we may not have monies. Even though we've got substantial savings here, it may disappear because of some of our other projects.
Well, I might, yeah, I may clarify. The $2 million I'm talking about, that's storm water. That is not street recon money. So, I think Jim's talking about the condition of the roadway, which we are looking at northern portions of, of Ninth Street that, that don't need some of those utilities under, underground that we can, that we can move forward. But the savings that we're talking about is strictly storm water money. So, again, that's the easy nexus, is to give it to the two projects that we know are over budget currently. To go further on Ninth Street, absolutely, I understand that. But we're talking about adding all the other funds to that as well, which we don't have that great of a savings in.
Mr. and Mrs.
Storm water.
Right. And for 3A, we had that money designated, because we saved it up for this year. But we don't know what it's going to look like next year, based on sales tax revenue for 2020. And we do have a question on, on Facebook, and Adam, I think you, you'll need to answer this. Does the Ninth Street? Does the Ninth Street project include new curb and gutter?
Yes, only where it's needed. We're not replacing all the curb and gutter. There's a fair amount of it that's going to remain. It is in good shape, but we are going to fix the portions that need to be fixed, yes.
Okay, very good. Councilman Meisner?
Adam, just clarify, it looks to me like there's going to be a couple of trees that are going to have to be removed on Ninth Street just because of encroachment on the curb?
Possible. We have currently none planned, but some of those, sometimes when we get things dug up, things change. But there are currently no tree removals planned with the exception of some trees near Washington School because they're, they are in the new alignment of the sidewalk for the new school.
All right, thank you.
Is there any more discussion from city council? You'd like to entertain a motion, please?
I can't do a motion because I don't have a, I don't have any attachments.
Well, it'd be nice to switch it up tonight anyways. We can.
Hey, I. Raise their hand.
I'm not seeing an attachment online either.
It would just be an emotion toward the bid number 1520 to Avalanche Escavating.
There you go, Brandon. Hit it.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to award Avalanche Construction bid, I'm sorry, tell me it again.
Number 1520.
Number 1520.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Brandon Smith and seconded by John Hammerick. And is there any discussion? And I'll call for a roll.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Awesome. We're excited to be moving forward on the street reconstruction of Ninth Street sooner than later. This is fantastic. And it's been really refreshing tonight to just move forward with regular city business that we're still moving forward, getting things done, and we're not totally stifled by the COVID-19 pandemic. But with that said, we are on the marathon and we still have a lot of work to do in that regards. Jim Meisner, do you have something to add to that?
Just to reiterate that, that as much as I'm suggesting that we cut down to bare bones, the two-way monies and the stormwater monies, those are completely separate funds. And in a dire situation, we could not use those funds for general fund expenditures. So we're moving forward with projects where the money is very specific in terms of what it can be used for.
Right. We're lucky that we have those designated funds so we can take care of those capital improvement, improvements that are very necessary for our city. But Canyon City still keep being safe. We're supposed to be wearing those face masks still, staying home still. Let's do that so that we can open up our businesses and get closer to normal life starting April 27th. We still have a long ways to go, but we're, we're going to do it. This disruption has caused us to have to be more innovative and change business. And in the end, it's going to be changed for the better. And we are going to get through this and we will be better in the end. We are strong and we've really come together. I'm really proud of Canyon City and our staff. A special shout out to Ryan Stevens, brand new administrator. You know, I kind of mentioned to him, we gave him a really long list of things he needed to get done for his review.
Or get busy.
That's coming up, but I think we need to have some grace and give some recognition that he has been absolutely incredible and working incredibly hard and has been building some great bridges with our other stakeholders in this global pandemic that we did not anticipate. As far as leadership goes, we don't, we've never had to lead through a global pandemic or something like a World War II type of response. And I, I'm really proud of Ryan. He's been doing a really good job.
Both of you have done a good job.
Thank you.
And our entire staff really has been fantastic. So, all right. Well, I hate to see you guys go. I miss you. It has been good to see you tonight, but it's been a long night. So I'll invite you to get back to your families and keep up the good work. And we'll see you later.
Thanks, everybody.
Goodbye.
Thanks, Adam.